Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. A motion is in order for the approval of the meeting agenda. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the meeting agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zargarpur seconds. Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Ralston, motion passed.
Moving on to the motion to enter closed session, a motion is in order.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. Sorry. I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711 and 2.2-3712, the Prince William County School Board enter a closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss with staff the appointment, transfer, release, assignment, and promotion of specific officers and employees under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1. Two, to evaluate the clerk of the school board and approve annual goals for the office of the school board clerk for the 2022-2023 under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1. Three, to evaluate division council and approve annual performance goals for the office of division council for year 2022-2023. And four, to discuss with the division council and staff actual or probable litigation and specific legal matters involving specific staff and students under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A7 and 8. Five, to consult with staff and legal counsel regarding the legal requirements and procedures for collective bargaining by school board employees, which requires legal advice and guidance as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8. Six, to discuss and receive briefings by staff members related to the security of school facilities and the safety of persons using facilities and actions taken to respond to such matters where discussion and open meeting would jeopardize the security of such facilities pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A19 and 7. To consult with staff and legal counsel regarding the acquisition of real property for the construction of a school where discussion and open meeting would adversely affect the school board's bargaining position or negotiating strategy as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-37113 and 8. To consult with legal counsel and receive legal advice regarding PWCS non-discrimination policies and regulations under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
A second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Ralston, motion passed.
The Prince William County School Board will now enter closed session and return open session at 7:00. Thank you. Okay, good evening. The Prince William County School Board is now returning to open session from closed session. A motion is in order. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting of September 21st, 2022 be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that to best each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lossfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies; and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
A second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Ralston, motion passed.
Moving on to the approval of appointments and releases, a motion is in order. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointments and releases of specific employees as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
A second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Ralston, motion passed.
Okay, great. At this time, we'll do the pledge of allegiance, and tonight, we have Chance Williams from Forest Park High School with us as our new student member on the school board, and we're going to have him lead us in the pledge this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chance. Moving on to our Thriving Futures Focus, which is our regular part of our meeting. Today, we're going to, pleased to continue our launching Thriving Futures Focus this school year to recognize several outstanding students and employees. Mrs. Adele Jackson, Board Vice Chair and Brentsville Magisterial District Representative, will recognize the award-winning Patriot High School family, Career and Community Leaders of America Club. Ms. Jackson?
Hi, good evening. The Patriot High School family's Career and Community Leaders of America, or FCCLA program, and members of the family relations classes worked together to earn the National High School Stand Up Award for their advocacy project. This project was called No More Trash Bags and focused on donating and filling backpacks for Comfort Cases organization in Rockville, Maryland. Comfort Cases distribute the backpacks nationwide to social service agencies that give bags to foster children traveling between homes. Patriot High students collected and filled 48 backpacks with pajamas, books, blankets, toiletries, and more. They also made 24 full-size tie fleece blankets. This summer, the Patriot High School FCCLA joined more than 7,000 FCCLA student members, advisors, and guests at the Annual National Leadership Conference in San Diego. No More Trash Bags project was one of the very few in the nation recognized. The Patriot FCCLA received $1,000 to continue their philanthropic efforts. Several students also submitted entries at the national level. This chapter also won awards at the state level last year. Congratulations to Catherine Jett McVeigh, Family and Consumer Sciences teacher, and FCCLA advisor, Principal Dr. Michael Bishop, Assistant Principal David Van Geller, and FCCLA students for this outstanding honor. Ms. McVeigh will come forward now to say a few words and introduce her students.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson, Board members, Chairman Latif, Dr. McDade, and the superintendent staff on behalf of Patriot FCCLA for inviting us here this evening. My name is Catherine Jett McVeigh, and I am one of the advisors for the Patriot Chapter of Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. My colleague, Mrs. Jessica Stott Hennefeld, and I are so grateful to be able to work with motivated students to complete such awesome advocacy and educational projects such as the FCCLA Stand Up National Program. Our chapter president, Mrs. Abby Trapani, was instrumental in our endeavors that started as a simple brainstorming activity in our family relations classes, which led to over 65 students getting involved in implementing our winning project. Abby is joined today by Ms. Rowan and Ms. Razan Soralketam, members and state and national competitors for Patriot FCCLA. As you may know, leadership is one of the four pillars of Patriot High School and something that our principal, Dr. Bishop, strongly encourages for all students. FCCLA is a nationally affiliated Leaders of America Career and Technical Student Organization that encourages student members to identify needs, set goals, plan, engage, and evaluate worthy projects that help our local and greater communities. We are so appreciative of our administrative support from Mr. Dave Van Gelder, our Assistant Principal over Family and Consumer Sciences, and of course, Dr. Bishop, who helped secure funds for our students' trip to San Diego this past summer to compete and receive national recognition for our No More Trash Bags advocacy project. When students are acknowledged for their hard work, it ignites a contagious motivation that deepens the sense of pride and determination. With recognition of being a national award winner and a visit from the FCCLA National Executive Director to our school, Patriot FCCLA members continue to make a name for themselves as leaders in Prince William County schools and towards their own thriving futures. Thank you so much for your continued support.
Congratulations, Patriot High School's Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. Please stay a few more minutes while we recognize the next group so we can take a picture. And it is my honor to introduce Mrs. Lisa Zargarpur of the Coles District to recognize our next group. Ms. Zargarpur.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I am excited to welcome the Charles J. Colgan Senior High School Center for Fine and Performing Arts Creative Writing Program here tonight. Under the director of Jessica Duchesne, our students earned the Virginia High School League State Championship in creative writing. The winning collection submitted by Colgan High School included four pieces, earning the superior ranking. Additionally, Indigo Green, a recent graduate, took home an individual state championship for poetry. From a competitive field of 31 other Virginia schools with a little over 186 students, Colgan unseated Thomas Jefferson School for Science and Technology, who were the state champions for three consecutive years. Congratulations to Ms. Duchesne, Principal Dr. Tim Healy, and our outstanding students for this honor. We are very proud of you. Ms. Duchesne, please come forward to introduce your students.
Good evening, Honorable Prince William County Board. Thank you so much for that lovely introduction, Mrs. Zargarpur. Thank you, Chairman Latif. Thank you, Ms. McDade, or Dr. McDade, excuse me, and for all the other board members of Prince William County Schools. I would firstly like to introduce the Colgan Creative Writing students who are present tonight. Savannah Loy, honorable mention in creative nonfiction. Kitty Pierce Moistner, superior ranking in creative nonfiction, as well as Aiden Sadler, superior ranking in fiction. I would like to thank them deeply for their hard work and their dedication to creative writing. I also wish to thank Dr. Healy, as well as Colgan Assistant Principals Ms. Riddle and Dr. Parrish, in particular, for the continued support of Colgan Creative Writing, supporting us in our extracurricular endeavors, including our two literary journals and bi-monthly reading series, Sirens Cove. I would also like to thank Prince William County Schools for their continued support in the creative arts. As we all are well aware in this room today, that when you support the arts, you support the whole student. You support their creativity and individuality, and I see it every day, and that's so much more than a trophy and even unseating TJ. My students devote so much of themselves, their time, energy, passion, to their craft and our program. We really, truly, together, become a community of writers, and that's what's winning is. I am thankful that each morning I enter my classroom and I help mentor my students as writers and as individuals, to watch them grow wings and soar, and they do. And as a teacher, as a writer, and as a person, I cannot be any prouder of them. Thank you again, Prince William County Board of Education, Superintendent McDade, Tim Healy, and all of those who support Colgan Creative Writing on behalf of our program and our students. Thank you.
Dr. McDade?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I would just like to acknowledge one more time the award-winning Patriot High School family, Career and Community Leaders of America chapter, along with their sponsor, Ms. McVeigh, and their principal, Dr. Michael Bishop, as well as his administrative team for supporting this work. And congratulations to Colgan High School for your amazing Fine and Performing Arts Creative Writing Program and creative writing teacher, Ms. Duchesne. So, thank you so much. Congratulations to you all. Both programs encourage students to engage in activities that meets their interests and builds connections in their school community beyond the academic classroom experience. And these connections really lead students to having more caring adults mentoring and supporting them with academic and extracurricular success, as well as social and emotional well-being. So, job well done. We are incredibly proud of each of you. Congratulations.
You know, we've been doing this now for almost a year, and I have to say, you know, this is a little bit off script, but I have to, there's an ancient Chinese proverb that says, "Teachers open doors, but it's up to the student to go through." You know, in our community, we have parents, we have administrators, we have principals, we have volunteers that are helping push those kids through the doors, and I can't thank you enough, especially our principals, Dr. Bishop, Dr. Healy. Both of you are here tonight. This is after hours. We know the kind of work your high schools do, the kind of programs you guys are running, the time Ms. McVeigh, Ms. Duchesne spend with these kids over and above the time, over and above any dollar we can give you. There's no way to repay you, and it is just so important, the work you're doing, and I just can't thank you all enough for that. And so, again, one more round of applause, and I'd like the students to come up and the coaches for a picture with the school board. Thank you. Okay, fantastic. So, that concludes our Thriving Futures Focus for this evening. We're moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda. A motion is in order. Ms. Jackson?
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Ms. Williams, second's motion. Any discussion? Ms. Jessie?
I'd like to discuss items, one, item 1203, I'm sorry, item 1202, the Equity Representatives, and my representative is Mrs. Robin Rubio, and I know Dr. Brown, she's going to do a great job for you guys, so I'm very pleased to have recommended her. And under the 1209, the naming of the Independence Non Traditional. I think we have a slide, do we have a slide for that? I sent it to Mr. Gilmore, he may not, Mr. Gilford?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir? Okay, thank you. Look at that handsome guy. When I learned of Dr. Eisman plans to retire, immediately got on the phone and called him to do what we call down south, to fuss at him. I was fussing at him for one, two reasons. One, he was leaving, and two, that he needed my permission to retire. And when I called, he was not there. Ms. Jan Smith, his secretary, talked to me, and she said, "Well, he's not here, we'll have you, I'll have him call you," but she said, "I'd like to make a request." She said she'd like to honor this man by permanently displaying his name on the school he founded and fought for. We wanted to do it prior to his retirement so he would know. We didn't want to tell him because he would have said, "No, don't do it." But, we are doing it now. We're a little bit late doing it, but we're still doing it. And I want to, first of all, say to Ms. Jan Smith, please raise your hand. You know, when you hire, when you're a principal, they say, "Get a good secretary." This lady has done it all. I mean, she formed a committee, she received letters from staff, professional colleagues, elected officials. We have some from Supervisor Angry, Bodie, and Franklin, and from Dr. Leonard Lacy, who is the husband of Renee Lacy. Her name is on the side of the building also. She conducted student video, student surveys, video. This notebook, full of letters, was sent to Dr. McDade and also to the board clerk, and I've sent letters for those people who did not read that entire notebook. I would like to start by, you know, he and I were talking, said maybe a resolution. I'm not really the resolution type, the wherewithal is getting next to me. So, I did write a special tribute to him, and following this, the person who is representing that district, Mr. Wilks, will also follow my presentation, and anyone else who wants to add. This is what the committee wanted to say about him. Founder, visionary, visionary change agent. And so, this is a tribute to Dr. Robert Icon. I came to this board 10 years ago without a sense of direction, but quickly changed what I visited a school called New Directions. I thought my visit would last for 30 minutes. When it lasts a half-day, I thought, "No way." I met a man with a most infectious smile, and his passion for his students made me stay for a while. I had worked in institutional settings where children labeled special, lived behind gated walls, only to learn that they were not special at all. I quickly learned that Bob Icon not only treated his students like they were very special every day, but special in a gifted kind of way. He showed me students' exit portfolios that were required for graduation. He said this was a minimal expectation. I stayed so long that I met students who had completed their morning elementary tutoring. They so reminded me of the unfortunate students that I had previously worked and were mistakenly locked away in a Chicago institution. Not, didn't have anything to do with it. Students from this school demonstrated underwater, his school demonstrated underwater robotic skills, and were highly competitive in each competitive drill. I decided to attend the graduation ceremony, expecting a little pomp and circumstance. When I walked into graduation at the site, which was Hilton Performance Art, it truly put me in a trance. Yes, I was impressed with the chandeliers, the operatic setting, and all the glitter and the glow. But what blew me away was who was running the show. The students were the speakers, not some adult special guests. Bob and his staff selected them because this event required only the best. When it became time to take New Direction in a new direction, building a new school, it was the students who named the school because that was an Icon rule. Bob was an unsung hero who had found a way of transporting his students, had to find a way of transporting his students to school because we, the school division, did not provide a bus for them. That was a school division rule. Unlike others, principals, who were given a year of leave to open a new school, he was required to open a new school while running three other schools because that was a new rule for him. He did not mind the extra hours because he had a new Icon rule. Students at Independence would be allowed to ride a bus to school. The difference between a moment in history and a moment and event is that the latter requires sacrifice. My hope, and the hope of school board members, by showcasing the contribution of this man who made sacrifices tonight, we will make this contribution a historical event that can have a lasting impact on how we see certain students. I was given this quote by a parent. I don't know its origin, but it's a good quote. So, I said, "If you're going to steal, steal from the best." And this is the quote I think highlights who Dr. Icon is. He's a man who cares for children whose pictures are not on anybody's dressers. For children whose smiles make us cry, whose nightmares come in the daytime, and those children who may live and move but have no being, he gave them hope and being. Thank you, Dr. Icon, and the Independence staff, for taking students like these from all, all of our districts, who were fragmented and even broken, and for making them whole again. Thank you.
Mr. Wilk?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I didn't make mine rhyme, although I can sing, you know that, but. Good evening, everyone. The naming of the building, library, has been a long process. I do want to applaud my colleague, Mrs. Jessie, for her commitment and insistence on doing right by this amazing person, Dr. Robert Icon. I must admit, I do not know Dr. Icon as well as some of my colleagues, Mrs. Jessie, Ms. Williams, who have worked much closer with Dr. Icon than I have. However, I do not believe I need to have a personal relationship with Dr. Icon to be aware of his many accomplishments and his overall impact on our school division and the thousands of students he both directly and indirectly supported with his life's work. Two weeks ago, I again had the pleasure of visiting Independence and meeting with the new principal with Mrs. Jessie. As I walked into the building, I realized for the first time since Dr. Icon's retirement that almost every hallway and room in the building was touched by his many years of working with the students of Prince William County. From the overall design, furniture, bulletin boards, and murals, every one of them reminded me of how much Dr. Icon dedicated to our Prince William County students. One bulletin board stood out to me and helped launch my interest in learning more about the accomplishments of this community servant. The poem, "The Road Not Taken" by Robert Frost, was published in the Atlantic Monthly in August of 1915. In the poem, Frost writes about his acquaintance at the time, writer Edward Thomas. Thomas was often described as indecisive and often lamented how he should have taken the other road when faced with the choice. "The Road Not Taken" argues for the importance of our choices, no matter if these choices are big or small, because in the scheme of life, all decisions play a critical role in our future successes. Unlike the main character of Frost's poem, Dr. Icon was not indecisive in his decisions that aimed at providing a high-quality, equitable education for his students. Each decision he made along his educational journey, no matter how small, had a significant impact on all students in Prince William County. He was perspicacious. There was no- He was perspicacious, there was no divergence in his paths. Dr. Icon made both large and small incremental decisions, consistent throughout the mission of educating and being an advocate for all students in our county. His career in Prince William County began as a principal in New Directions Alternative Education Center after seventeen years of steadfast service to Fairfax County Schools. During his first full year as principal, Dr. Icon redesigned the school by introducing the four-by-four modified block schedule, winning the PWCS One Earth One Change Recycle Proposal, and providing free breakfast and lunch for all students. Some of the other notable accomplishments during his tenure include offering advanced placement courses for the first time to non-traditional students, adding a school counseling center in a building redesign, establishing the first commencement and award ceremony for New Directions, and expanding, excuse me, blended learning by offering his students twenty-four-seven access to educational services. Over his ten years, over two thousand four hundred fifty students have graduated. Now, the list could go on, and I could expound on these accomplishments in the next hour, but I realize I have a limited amount of time and want to leave the opportunities for some of my other colleagues to add remarks. I want to add that Dr. Icon was an exponent for equity and led by actions as he became a recognized figure in Virginia and throughout the country. In two thousand and nine, he proffered a plan to the school division to create a new K-12 non-traditional brick-and-mortar school. In two thousand and fifteen, as a result of his assiduous efforts, Dr. Icon's vision was approved, and in two thousand and eighteen, the Independence Non-Traditional School opened with over seven hundred students. I want to note that Dr. Icon saw not only the construction of the state of the art facility, but he was also leading the three non-traditional schools at the same time. Dr. Icon is an innovator, a man with panache, someone willing to think outside the box and introduce new ideas and concepts to the school division. Dr. Icon is a champion for the underserved and disenfranchised youth of our county. He brought all his students' one-to-one access, academic opportunities that had not previously existed, and a building that brought equity and access to opportunities to our special needs students by offering flexible scheduling and the ability to participate with peers in general education courses and student activities. Dr. Icon introduced virtual learning long before it became a standard presence in public education. After thirty-one years of advocacy for non-traditional and special education students, their families, and his dedicated staff, it is now time that we place his name proudly on the name of his vision, and a fulgent world-class non-traditional school that will continue to serve all students in Prince William County. Dr. Icon, the choices we make are impactful, but the way we remember them is what helps us shape us as individuals. I am honored to support the naming of the library at Independence to commemorate your longstanding service to our school division.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Round two for honoring Dr. Icon, we did at the end of the school year last year, the final meeting, and there was a lovely retirement ceremony, and I was proud to have a congressional record introduced in his honor, so that he will always be remembered. What I will say, as someone who graduated from Prince William County Schools at a time when there was no alternative education, and saw so many of my peers left without the ability to continue their education, I am so proud that I was able to grow up and be a board member and participate in ensuring that no student will ever have that experience again. Dr. Icon is probably one of the most humble, genuine, and kind individuals that I have ever met in my entire life. I also think that he would be mortally embarrassed by all this attention on him, but I am very glad and honored to be able to participate in having his name placed in the gym. I will leave you with a story of Dr. Icon that I think sums him up so very, very well. Before I say that, I just want to say that he is the man responsible for changing and continuing to evolve the perception of those students, and loving them for who they are, which is key to anybody's education. But he once told me this story, which forgive me for sharing, Dr. Icon, but way before he was a doctor, on his way to New Directions School, because it used to be in an office building in Manassas, before we gave him a building, he saw a young man in the median on the way to school. And the young man had been a former student who was now panhandling, because he did not have a home, and he did not have support. And not only did he pick him up, get him re-enrolled in school, found him housing, and fed him, and it was no judgment. And that is the kind of principal, the kind of person that he was. He opened up New Direction, Independence, not only for the students who were there for disciplinary issues, but for all students who didn't fit a traditional mold in a traditional school environment. And I am really honored and blessed that I had the opportunity to work with him, to support him and his staff, and to develop a professional relationship with him. And I hope that he can, I will be able to continue to do that, because he is a person that if you don't know, provides excellent mentorship and always an alternative lens to which we should all be reminded to view the world, because no individual is the same. We all have our ups and downs, and we should all be put in a position where we interact with someone who loves us and accepts us unconditionally, without judgment when trying to achieve our goals. So, thank you.
Okay. Please vote.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Ralston, motion passed.
Excellent, congratulations. Moving on to the, skipping here, we're on citizen comment time. We do have, those citizens who've signed up in advance with the clerk may address the school board this evening when they are called to the podium. The citizen comment period for regular school board meetings is limited to one hour. The first half hour is reserved for comments on agenda items, and the second half hour for comments on non-agenda items and other topics germane to the operations of the policies of Prince William County Schools. Citizens signed up to speak on the agenda items must speak to the agenda item they have identified, or they'll be asked to step down. We have two speakers on agenda items and ten on non-agenda items. Speakers have three minutes to speak. The exception to this tonight will be for two speakers on the non-agenda who will be using an interpreter. Additional time will be allotted to those two speakers to allow time for translation as provided in Policy one thirty-four. Please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium, or you will be asked to step aside. We ask that the audience please be respectful of each speaker, and refrain from any clapping, cheering, or jeering to avoid disruption of the meeting. If you do not do so, the board will recess, and I will ask that the room be cleared to restore public order. When I call your name, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Our first two speakers are going to be Jan Smith and Padreus Prater. Ms. Smith?
Good evening, Dr. Latif, school board members, and Dr. McDade. My name is Jan Smith, and my address is on file with the clerk. On behalf of the students, their families, and the staff of Independence Non-Traditional School, I would like to thank you for your support and consideration in naming a portion of Independence Non-Traditional School in honor of Dr. Icon. Dr. Icon has a special place in the hearts of all who are part of Independence Non-Traditional School. His vision and commitment to alternative and non-traditional education and students is unparalleled. Dr. Icon is truly a visionary when it comes to working with children. It is this vision that created Independence Non-Traditional School, a school that is not matched anywhere in the country. Dr. Icon showed his leadership daily by having flexibility, compassion, and understanding, not only for the students, but also for staff. Dr. Icon also created a climate and culture that is safe, caring, orderly, and that promotes relationships among adults and among students. For many of our students, this safe and caring climate and culture is the main reason why so many of our students choose to stay at Independence Non-Traditional School, and why so many of our former students come back to visit. Dr. Icon is truly missed, but his vision is still present at Independence Non-Traditional School, and therefore, this great honor of naming the gymnasium of Independence Non-Traditional School after him. He is a founder of our school, it was his vision, and he will forever be a change agent for all students. Now, on a personal note, I want to thank you, Mrs. Jessie, for your support in making this happen. Words cannot express the appreciation I feel for your guidance, your time, and the heart that you have for the students at Independence. I love you. Mr. Wilk, thank you for your efforts and the support to Ms. Jessie and the Independence Naming Committee and all stakeholders. Mrs. Williams, you have always supported Dr. Icon's vision and mission, and without a doubt, I know that will continue. Lastly, is my hope that the executive leadership will meet and work with the Independence Naming Committee and school staff to confirm a location of the inscription on the building. It has always been my understanding and belief that the school board is here to support the schools, which you do, and the superintendent is here to ensure that what you all direct is followed and in place. Dr. Icon leaves a lasting imprint in non-traditional education, not only in Prince William County Schools, but nationally as well, and thus, we should honor him accordingly with his name on the exterior of Independence Gymnasium. Thank you for your time.
Padreus Prater?
Good evening, Dr. Latif, Dr. McDade, and school board members. I'm Padreus Prater, and I'm a member of the Neapsco District. The item I'm speaking on tonight is legislative priorities. The school division is committed to providing a healthy learning atmosphere, reducing its carbon footprint, while contributing to a more resilient environment for future generations, and producing cost savings with infrastructure efficiency improvements. I'm speaking on this topic tonight because Prince William County Schools lobbyist, Mr. Jim, during the last school board meeting, he talked about how there's a three billion dollar surplus in Virginia. One billion's already spent, and, I mean, the powers that be in Richmond think that they've done enough for the school system. So he said, "Parents, come out and speak up." So I'm just taking that note from Jim. I'm excited to see that Prince William County continues to take steps to improve the energy efficiency in school buildings. K through twelve school districts' operating budgets are consumed by energy costs, second only to personnel costs and overall budget expenses. A reduction in energy costs means more money for the classrooms. Prince William County supports legislations that will provide state funding for energy-efficient initiatives and opportunities. And Dr. Latif, this is the part where the person who shows up late to the cookout tells you how to spend the money? This is my part there. First, the funding should be prioritized by Title I schools, which are those with at least forty percent of children from low-income families. A high number of Title I schools are in Black and Latino communities. Title I schools, on average, are older than schools in more affluent areas, and the teachers and the students are more likely to suffer from health problems that are exacerbated by mold and poor indoor air quality. It's my opinion that Prince William County should, if they should come into a windfall of additional funding, it makes sense to start with the students most in need. My hope is that additional infrastructure funding, Prince William County Schools can continue to focus on renovation and modernization efforts in areas where our aging schools would benefit most. It's no secret that with every opportunity I have, I will promote Neapsco's district, where we have several schools that could benefit today. Thank you again for supporting legislation that will provide for additional funding for the modernization of our schools.
The next five speakers, and they can come sit up front, will be Jalen Custis, Magali Hurtado, Richard Jesse, Maggie Hansford, Amy McCarthy. Jalen Custis.
Good evening, Superintendent McDade, Dr. McDade, Mr. Chairman, and members of the school board. My name is Jalen Custis, I live in the Woodbridge District. I'm here tonight to address two incidents that occurred in our schools over the past two weeks. One being an incident at Freedom High School, which occurred on September twelfth, where a student brought a gun to school. Another incident on September thirteenth, where a middle schooler brought a knife to a school and held it to another student's neck, where a teacher got injured. This isn't the first time weapons got into our school, or other drugs have gotten into our schools. As a former student, I remember worrying about whether or not I would get shot. I believe I'm not the only one who has thought about this. Students and teachers should feel safe going to school. Parents shouldn't have to worry whether or not their child will get shot at school. As stated before, not only do guns get through, but other foreign substances. I remember last year going to lunch, and down the hallway, there's a bathroom, and I remember it was smelling like marijuana. I've seen videos of kids making lean on Snapchat inside of our schools. For those who don't know what lean is, drug substances, they mix it up, stuff like that, they drink it. We can't wait for a student to overdose in our bathrooms. We can't wait for a student to get shot in the classroom for us to take actions. Something must be done to prevent this from happening. I strongly support the placement of metal detectors and X-ray machines inside our schools to combat the weapons and other drug substances that are continuously getting into our schools and distracting the learning environment. We must also enforce the coded behavior to the fullest. I want to thank Dr. McDade for taking the time to look into how to scare our schools and hiring more SORs. Parents shouldn't have to worry about whether their kid will make it home. Students should feel safe inside schools, and teachers shouldn't have to be police officers. Thank you. My name is Jalen Custis, and I reside in the Woodbridge District.
No clapping, jeering, or cheering, folks. We'll maintain decorum, please. Magali Hurtado? Ms. Hurtado?
My name is Richard Jesse, live in Okaquan District. A couple of things I want to talk about tonight. One is, since the beginning of this year, there's been a change of something where the speakers, like I am right now, are only shown for a few seconds, and then the camera shows the board, and I think that's inappropriate. It should show the speakers the whole time they're speaking. Mr. Chair, when you say, "Clear the room," perhaps, if it's possible, clear this person who is creating the problem, and don't punish everybody else. But if it's an issue, then clear the room. I also want to talk, you know, I made a lot of recommendations last year, and you don't get feedback from the board that often, but some of the members said that they were going to look at it over the summer. There's not a lot of things on agenda this year, so far, so I don't know why some of the things, if you did make changes or recommendations, that we're not discussing that now. I do want to say to the public that if you agree with some of the things I say, it's important for you to come to the school board, and if you can be one of the twenty people to speak, to speak up and so forth to the board. We talked about boundaries last year, and made some recommendations on that. I talked about citizen time, where we only have twenty people that can speak, and I disagree with that. The other thing is, I would like to recommend that when you have the students and teachers come up here for recognition, let the students talk. Let them tell you what's happening. You know, we give the recognition to the principals and the coaches, but the students were the one that did it. Let them talk. I'm sure that they can take care of speaking and getting that done. The other thing is, I'm so happy that you are going to do something for Mr. Icon. You know, doing something while a person is alive is important. Doing something meaningful in a way, and that, again, one of the things I said to this board, I think we should have a day where you recognize what the school is named for, and some of the rooms and stuff in the school, and give recognition, so people don't forget. So I just hope that we begin to look at some of these things, and I'd like to see more people, if you agree with me, or if you don't agree with me, at least come up and speak. Thank you.
Maggie Hansford?
Hello, my name's Maggie Hansford, and my address is on file with the clerk. I'm here tonight to thank the board for passing collective bargaining on June fifteenth of last school year. I'm also here to say that's part of the assignment. The full assignment is to now pass a meaningful resolution, and I just want to touch on a couple important pieces about what makes a resolution meaningful. And what makes a resolution meaningful when you're drafting a collective bargaining resolution is to make sure that there is all pieces of what a staff member's profession has in it. So we have to ensure that the resolution has compensation, So we have to ensure that the resolution has compensation, benefits, and work environment. That's what makes a collective bargaining resolution meaningful. It also has to be binding arbitration, which means both parties, in good faith, come to the table and find a resolution. They come together, and we agree, we find common ground and agree. And we need to be able to do that with good faith, and we need to make sure that both parties must come to the table to ensure that our staff is felt that they have a meaningful seat at the table. And when you have a meaningful seat at the table, your voice is heard during important conversations that are had with regards to your compensation, your benefits, and your work environment. So I look forward to you all drafting a resolution and passing one in a timely manner so that we can come to the table in a respectable amount of time. I know that educators in Prince William have been working with our other labor groups in the county. We're working with police and fire and county employees to ensure that we all have a voice. Because with the new law that was in place over two years ago, it ensures that the county boards are able to provide collective bargaining rights for our public sector employees, your public servants. Our community works because we work. We work with our community's children, and our police force works for our families, our fire department works for our families, and county staff works tirelessly to ensure that Prince William is a great place to live, work, and play. And for us to be able to do that, I think the greatest tool you all have right now to ensure retention and recruitment of certified employees is to pass a meaningful collective bargaining resolution. I look forward to working with Dr. McDade and partnering with you to ensure that our staff have a meaningful seat at the table, and I appreciate your all's time. Thank you.
Amy McCarthy, and after her would be Tammy Fick and Brandy Provenzano.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, Dr. McDade, and members of the school board. Welcome back to this new school year, and already, I can feel a difference in this room. As I look around, I really am seeing so much common ground. Mostly, we are all here because we believe in our public schools in Prince William County. And most of us want all of the students in Prince William County to succeed. As our leaders, you want to make the best decisions to assure the success and safety of all the students, parents, and staff of Prince William County schools. This is clearly no easy task, yet you have stayed the rocky course through the entire pandemic and have guided us along the way. As your teachers, teachers assistants, bus drivers, food service workers, and other school employees, we are the ground workers that make this system run based on the decisions made from our leaders. We are entrusted with the safety and education of the children of Prince William County schools every single day. And as the parents, moms, dads, grandparents, guardians, and community members, we share the same concerns and worries about our own children and the children in our communities. While we try to recover from the past two years with increased mental illness, learning loss, and the strong need for all of our social-emotional learning, we need to challenge ourselves to do this together, with all stakeholders fully invested in the decision-making process and given a seat at the table. We have a space for parents, administrators, and community members, but there is an empty seat that needs to be filled by someone on the ground that does this work every single day. It is time to pass a meaningful resolution and show your communities and all of the surrounding communities that you value your employees and are ready to commit to having our voices included in the decisions that affect us and your children every day. Collective bargaining is a tool for teacher retention, competition, and student success. Collective bargaining is a democratic value. Collective bargaining is a human right. Thank you.
Tammy Fick.
Good evening, Dr. McDade and school board members. My name is Tammy Fick, and I live in the Brentsville District, and I teach in the Coles District. My address is on file. Let's talk about one way that we, as a district, can attract and retain teachers, especially those that live across our county lines. Let's stop charging these teachers for tuition for their students, their children, to come to our schools. Last June, when we were still looking for special education teachers for our students with autism, we had an absolutely fantastic interview with a teacher from Loudon, and after running the numbers of the pay cut and the cost of tuition to bring her kids to our district for school, she passed on it because it was too much of a pay cut. This could have been one less vacancy in our district. At Bennett, we have a third-grade teacher that lives in Manassas and has to pay tuition to bring his kid to school with him. Now, yeah, Manassas, where depending on what side of the street you live on could determine if you are in our district or a different district. Why on earth are we telling teachers that we want them, but hey, if you come, you're going to have to pay to bring your kids to these outstanding schools with these amazing teachers? It just doesn't make sense. That seems to discriminate against family status. Our county, like so many others around us, are still in the need of staff members in the classroom. We are having an event on October 22nd, according to Dr. Latif's retweet that I saw this evening, to help non-teachers find their path to get licensed. I think that's wonderful. We need to do more to get people licensed in our classroom. That's a great incentive. We should be doing more to help people not only get their license, but to be able to afford to get it as well. But let's hope they don't live outside the county lines and want to bring their kids to our school. As you're writing our resolution, which I'm sure you're working on, because we all know that that's vital to recruiting and retaining teachers, and it was part of your assignment, keep this issue in mind, please. Get rid of tuition for teachers' kids. We, as teachers, put forth way more money in our classes and classrooms than the district would ever lose by giving us a break or making it a sound financial choice to teach here. And with a seat at the table, we can discuss many more concerns. Thank you.
I'm just waiting for the clock, sorry. Good evening, my name is Brandy Provenzano, and my address is on file. Tonight, I am reading on behalf of a fellow staff member who is afraid of retaliation for speaking up. I quote, "I always wanted to teach, until now. This year, I reached a breaking point. I'm continuously asked to do things that I know are not in the best interest of the students, and I'm tired. These poor kids are taking tests, pre-test, post-test, quick checks, retakes, state tests, county tests, SOLs, and I have to keep testing, generate more data, study the data, test, and generate more data that I take to meetings where exhausted educators sit around and listen to why students are not learning. Then we are sent off to test some more and collect more data. I know what my students need, and this is not it. They are becoming tiny, bleary-eyed, test-taking robots glued to canvas and computers all day. They complain of headaches constantly. Who can blame them? Didn't we come back into the building to give them social interaction and hands-on learning that their brains needed? When is there time for that? I wish I knew. I used to do science experiments, plan camp-out Fridays where kids brought in blankets and flashlights and read in their PJs. I used to take them outside to learn about gravity. I used to teach. Now there is no time for that. After all the testing and the meetings and staff development and online training and forced volunteering for after-school clubs and activity, bus duty, covering classes for sick coworkers, CLT meetings, endless data analysis, parent meetings, IEP meetings, documenting the meetings, sending emails to follow up on the meetings, there isn't time for anything. There is definitely not time for planning for quality teaching. How can I do that if I don't even have time to pee? A meaningful collective bargaining resolution could change this for staff members. Staff members and educators would provide input and actually be heard. Why are they leaving? The public keeps asking. This is why. Give them a voice and a seat at the table. Work with them instead of against them. Pass a meaningful collective bargaining resolution, please." Unquote. My own words would be, "Every teacher in every classroom that I know could tell you who's learning, who's not, and what they need. We don't need to continue to test and gather data. We need time to teach, and we need a voice so that you can hear us and give us that time." Thank you.
Take Leslie Tom, Lenka Mendoza, and Carlos Zuniga.
Hello, I am Leslie Tom. I'm a resident and voter of the Coles District, and I am a special education teacher in the Gainesville District. My address is on file with a clerk. For my three minutes of allotted time, I'd like to focus on the ideas of expectations and values. How, before you can put an expectation on a person, you have to show them that you value them. I would also like to ask for you to pass a meaningful resolution on collective bargaining. Before you can put an expectation on your school staff, you have to show that they're valued. I've been actively involved in Prince William County Schools for almost a decade now. I started as a parent volunteer, then I became a substitute teacher. I was a sponsor of the Kindness Club, a first LEGO League robotics coach, a PALS tutor. I also volunteer a lot of robotics competitions. I've seen chants at a few. And I also, most recently, became a special education teacher, supporting kindergarten, first grade, and second grade students in a self-contained classroom. I'm also a parent. I place a tremendous amount of trust in schools to foster the educational growth for my own children. I want them to be challenged by their academic work. I want their perspectives to be broadened. I want their identities to be honored and valued. These are my expectations for Prince William County Schools, and I show every teacher, every school representative and employee that I honor them because I'm right there along with them. As a teacher, I hold myself accountable to the same expectations for the students in my classroom. It is my responsibility to ensure that students are safe and that they're learning. Before I can put an expectation on them, I have to show them that I value them. How do I do that? In my classroom, my students, my assistants, and I make up a learning community. Everyone has an equal share and an equal voice in that community. We start out the year with interactive writing. We all share the marker and create our classroom promise. This year, it is as follows. We are safe, we are kind, we work hard, we have fun, we are a family. Zooming out on the same promise that my students have made to each other, in Mr. Sketch Marker is a very condensed, rainbow-colored, fruit-scented, kin-friendly version of the Prince William County Schools' strategic plans, values, and commitments. It's amazing to me that our very youngest students know that they thrive best in environments that are positive, inclusive, safe, and will allow them to be involved. Before I can put an expectation on my students, I have to show them that they are valued. Before you can put an expectation on us, we must know that we're valued. Please, pass a meaningful collective bargaining resolution for the sake of our students and our staff.
Thank you, Ms. Tom.
Thank you.
Lenka Mendoza. And she'll have an interpreter, so there'll be extra time allotted.
Okay. I'm going to have an interpreter, so she can start. Okay. Good afternoon, my name is Lenka Mendoza. I want to thank the school board for the opportunity to offer us a language.
Good afternoon, my name is Lenka Mendoza. I would like to thank you, the school board, for having us here.
I am the mother of a school person who attends Freedom High School. I'm here along with other parents from the same school.
Because we are very worried about the high risk for the safety and security that is presented right now within the schools.
It's only been two months since we started the school year, and it already happened four really bad incidents at the schools.
A couple of days ago, the school, Freedom, had to close its door, and actually, that closing lasted for three hours.
For our children and for us as parents, we had almost 200 parents outside waiting to figure out what was going on.
It was the three hours with the longest sadness, and I was very worried about what happened to my child.
Since 9:40, we had official news about what happened at 11:30.
When the school closed at 9:40 a.m., we just happened to have news around 11:10 in the morning about what was happening inside the school.
This is something that is really worrying, and as parents, we are here because we want to be part of it, and to see what we can do to make our schools safer.
This is actually very worrying for me. We, as parents, we want to find out and be active and trying to figure out what to do to maintain safety in our schools.
We don't want to continue with the anguish to leave our kids at school without knowing if we are going to be able to see them again.
I don't know if you guys have children at your school at the present moment.
It's a very complicated situation.
But right now, it's really complicated right now to have children.
That kid came with a gun at the school.
Back then, it happened to be that one of the classmates had a gun, actually had the gun at the school with him.
The police detained the kid, but the gun was never found. We don't know if the gun is still present at the school or actually left the property. It was not the only issue that happened with firearms.
The other day, kids from another school came to the school and hit one of the children from Freedom.
My daughter actually told me that she is not able to go to the bathroom because of the smoke that is present there, and it's impossible to get and breathe with the smoking at the bathrooms. We asked to have metal detectors at the schools.
To make sure not only that firearms are not present at the school, but any other type of metal that can harm our kids.
More police at the school.
We need more police present. Only one policeman per school.
It's not only for our children, it's also for the safety of the admin people and the teachers that work there. The parents of Freedom, we want to see the authorities to be able to reunite with the students to see what measures we can take to protect our children.
As parents, we would like to find out if we- As parents, we would like to find out if we can have a meeting with the people that actually represent Freedom to find out what is going to be done to ensure the safety of our kids at Freedom.
Aquella vez, gracias a Dios, no hubo ningún herido, pero no vamos a esperar que uno de nuestros hijos termine muerto para empezar a tomar acción.
Thank God, that time, nobody was harmed, but we don't have to wait until that event happens that somebody probably can be dead. We don't want that to happen.
Estamos aquí para trabajar juntos por la seguridad de nuestros hijos.
We are here to work together for the safety of our children. Thank you.
Carlos Zuninga.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Venimos por el mismo punto con mi esposa, con padre de familia. Soy padre también de una hija en Freedom.
We, along with my wife and other parents, come to represent and have a daughter that is attending Freedom.
Tengo 20 años viviendo aquí en Prince William.
I've been living in Prince William for more than 20 years.
Ya dos hijos adultos terminaron el Potomac High School.
My two oldest kids actually ended high school at the Potomac.
Estaba algo regular, lo que era la seguridad en las escuelas, había bastante control policial, no tanto como hoy que no hay.
Back then, we could feel the presence of policemen more than now.
Este último año pasado, habían 515 casos de alcohol y drogas en las escuelas. 515 casos de alcohol y drogas en las escuelas.
So it has been 515 cases of alcohol and drugs present at the schools at this moment.
344 más que los años anteriores.
344 more compared to previous years.
722 casos de peleas y violencias con armas.
722 fights, blood violence events.
400 más que en los segundos periodos de los años anteriores.
And it was 400 more compared to the previous years.
No entiendo por qué nos quitaron la seguridad en las escuelas de nuestros hijos.
I don't understand why security was taken out of the schools.
En los 22 años trabajando, este año pasado no trabajé por una lesión que tuve en el trabajo. Lastimosamente me agotaron.
I've been working for more than 22 years. Unfortunately, last year I couldn't work. I have an issue, and they actually let me go.
En este año que no he trabajado, me estoy dando cuenta mucho qué es lo que faltan en las escuelas de nuestros jóvenes.
During this year that I haven't been able to work, I have been able to find out what is missing at the school for safety.
Nuestros hijos llegan aterrados a las casas.
Our children came back from the school, and they're afraid of what they have seen they live in.
No pierdan esa confianza en nosotros, los padres, que ustedes hoy nos representan en este board para nuestras escuelas.
Please don't forget that you, as the School Board, represent the parents of each children that is attending different schools at the present moment.
Hoy solo llegando acá al local de ustedes.
Today, just coming here.
Qué bonito es ver tres personas de seguridad, cuatro policías, dos personas en policías aquí adentro como ustedes, y en otras escuelas no hay eso, señores.
It is very nice to come to see by the door two security guys and then policemen all over here, two safety guys. It is very nice, but when you go to schools, you don't see that presence.
¿Cuántas cámaras tenemos aquí nomás dentro de este salón?
How many cameras right now at the present moment?
Nuestro personal, nuestros profesores también necesitan ese apoyo.
The admin people and the teacher needs the same commitment that you have here.
En este mes que han iniciado las escuelas de septiembre, cuatro casos han habido en Freedom. Un caso en Legris, no me acuerdo si, pero no sé en qué escuela. Otro caso más que una persona, una niña quiso herir a otra muchacha con un cuchillo y hirió la profesora.
Since September, we have been having four different cases in Freedom. One, I think it was on Legris. Another case of a girl that almost got cut from another lady that won an attack. Thank God, a teacher was able to find out that it was happening.
Les agradezco, les agradeceré que tomen acción.
I would like to thank you.
En estos casos, no esperemos una desgracia como la que pasó creo que en Texas, más de 20 niños muertos.
If you can take an action. And to avoid something similar that's happened in Texas, more than, I don't know how many kids that actually got killed.
Gracias por escucharme.
Thanks for listening to me tonight.
Okay, thank you. That concludes citizen comment time. Moving on to the next part of the agenda. We'll be doing 1401, the proposed sale of VPSA bonds. This is on for action, we heard this last meeting. A motion is in order, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I moved that the Prince William County School Board, A, authorize the completion and submission of the application to Virginia Public School Authority, VPSA, for the fall 2022 standalone bond sale on the amount of $44,360,000 to finance certain capital improvement projects for school purposes. B, authorize the superintendent or such other officer as she may designate to submit such documentation as required by the VPSA. C, request for the Board of County Supervisors to authorize the completion for a fall 2022 VPSA standalone bond sale and to take such other action as may be necessary to complete the bond sale. And D, direct that this resolution shall become effective immediately.
Do you have a second?
Ms. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I second.
Okay, any discussion? Questions? Okay, please vote.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Ralston, motion passed.
Moving on to the student representative time. Our student representative on the dais this evening is Chance Williams, a senior attending Forest Park High School. We are thrilled to have you, Mr. Williams, please.
Thank you. Good evening to the School Board, Dr. McDade, and the community present and watching online. I would like to start off by thanking the Prince William County School Board for this amazing opportunity to make sure the thoughts, feelings, and concerns of the Prince William County student body are heard and understood. Often, students throughout the county feel unheard and unseen by the School Board and school leadership. My goal as a student representative is to make students visible and amplify their voices to build consensus and address issues that affect all students. As many of you already know, the teachers and staff in this county are phenomenal. Before the school year began, I got the chance to attend the new educator induction head of my high school, Forest Park. There, I met dozens of amazing staff members, all excited and eager for the school year to begin. It is our amazing staff that shape our students and our students that go on to shape our world. It is true, Prince William County Schools provide students with a world-class education. PWCS is the 10th most diverse county in the nation, and this diversity is shown in our students. When addressing diversity in the county, I want to look at its effects on our schools and the curriculum. Currently, in Prince William County, African-American history is being offered at various high schools as an elective credit. While American history covers some of African-American history, there are either limitations or no coverage of Afro-indigenous history and culture. As schools and organizations incorporate diversity and inclusion into their day-to-day operations, it is important to consider offering this course as a history requirement rather than an elective. Most of us learn to be global citizens in the classroom. Offering African-American history is a great place to start dialogue of where we have been, where we are, and where we can go together. Former Governor Ralph Northam said, "Black history is American history, but for too long, the story we have told was insufficient and inadequate." African-American history starts from the early beginnings in Africa, through the transatlantic slave trade, the Civil War, emancipation, Reconstruction, the Civil Rights Era, into the present day. Covering just as much as any history course, yet still only counts as an elective. In subjects such as mathematics and science, there are various pathways students can choose to complete the requirements, including what courses to take and the level of difficulty. For history, there is only one choice in the difficulty of the course, such as choosing AP or dual enrollment. With College Board beginning to test an AP African-American history course, it is time for an update. Though the Board itself cannot make this decision, I believe the Board should advocate for African-American history to transition from an elective credit to a history credit. On a more positive note, I would like to address Dr. McDade's recent implementation of a security system every elementary school in the county. Not only does this provide peace of mind for the parents, but it also provides peace of mind for the students. At the high school level, though students will not admit it, the security guards provide a sense of safety in a world where dangers in schools are unfortunately common. When Dr. McDade entered this county, students were concerned with how this new superintendent from Chicago responds to us in our suburban neighborhoods, the PWCS policies, and our love for snow days. But now that she is here, her effect on the county has been nothing short of positive steps toward our future. The students truly look forward to your visits. Thank you, Dr. McDade, for everything you do to continually support our students. Finally, I would like to turn to the Capital Improvements Program. As a student, I had never heard of this initiative until a few days ago. As such, I want to simplify it a bit, that way students, staff, and community members know the Board has addressed issues pertaining to the physical school buildings. The Capital Improvements Program is a document detailing the county's plans to renovate, repair, and build schools in the county. To effectively sum it up directly using the document, the CIP serves as a tool for planning and implementing the capital improvement projects needed to house students and employees adequately. Students at Forest Park Potomac and Osborn Park High School beginning last year expressed a point that some of the newer schools may have benefits the older buildings do not have access to. So I'd like to present this document to let the students know the county has noticed and does have plans to renovate these schools. The Capital Improvements Program also outlines new schools coming to the county to address their concerns of overcrowding at current schools. I would like to encourage anyone with concerns for their building to review this plan as most issues have already been identified, outlined, and addressed. And with that, I officially end my remarks for my first School Board meeting during my last year as a student in Prince William County Schools. Go Bruins, thank you.
All right, go Bruins. Fantastic, Mr. Chance Williams. We are excited to have you, and we look forward to hearing from you each week. Now on to superintendent's time, is that correct? Am I looking at my schedule right? Dr. McDade, take it away.
Thank you so much, Dr. Latif, and thank you, Chance, for such a wonderful presentation, and we're excited to have you join us on the board. I've mentioned many times how critical it is to ensure we are educating our students in a safe and secure environment. Recent local events reminds us of the importance of working together proactively to address safety concerns. I appreciate our teachers and staff and students and their families and our school resource officers who work collaboratively as partners to address issues. In observance of National Security Officer Appreciation Week, I would also like to recognize the efforts of our security officers to build relationships with our students and staff members with the goal of creating a nurturing climate in which students can learn at high levels. Thank you each for all that you do on behalf of PWCS students, families, and staff. And speaking of partnerships, along with our commitment to improve school safety, our strategic plan focuses on the importance of community partnerships in helping schools address student needs that go beyond the classroom. Last week, the Military Child Education Coalition through the Marine Corps Base Quantico recognized Prince William County Public Schools as the 2022 Outstanding Individual Program Project Award winner for our PWCS Goals Purple Initiative. Congratulations to our Student Services Department and our schools for their hard work and for this recognition. PWCS understands the importance of recognizing the sacrifices made by the members of our military as well as the support required by our military families. Our website, www.pwcs.edu, includes multiple resources for military-connected students and their families. I also want to share information on an additional award bestowed upon PWCS within the past week. Last Friday, the U.S. Department of Education announced that Coles Elementary School has been named one of 297 National Blue Ribbon Schools for 2022. Coles Elementary is one of only seven national blue ribbon schools in Virginia and is being recognized in the category of exemplary achievement gap closing schools. Congratulations to Coles Elementary School's teachers and staff and students and their families for this well-deserved honor. Coles Elementary exemplifies our school division's commitment to launching thriving futures by providing equitable opportunities so that all students may learn and achieve. Before turning this over to our next presenter, I would also like to share that September 15th through October 15th is National Hispanic Heritage Month. Our Hispanic students collectively represent the largest demographic in our schools, and I look forward to witnessing the efforts of our schools to celebrate the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. I encourage our community members to participate in festivities honoring Hispanic Heritage Month and to watch our website and social media for highlights of observance of this important month. I also want to acknowledge that recently, new guidelines have been released from the Virginia Department of Education related to transgender policies. We are reviewing the guidelines to determine implications for the school division. But I want to reaffirm our commitment to protecting the overall physical, emotional, and psychological safety of all staff and students, inclusive of our LGBTQ+ community, and PWCS currently implements a non-discrimination and harassment policy which we will continue to enforce. Positive climate and culture is a key commitment in our strategic plan, and in PWCS, we will always treat all students and staff with kindness, compassion, and respect for their identity and overall well-being. In keeping with positive climate and culture, it's an honor this evening to share more information about our Prince William County Public Schools' Heals program. Grounded in commitment number two, positive climate and culture, out of our strategic plan, the PWCS Heals Initiative is a comprehensive plan to provide social and emotional support to students and staff. Ms. Heebner, our Associate Superintendent of Student Services and Post-Secondary Success, along with her dynamic team, will share more information and updates about our PWCS Heals program, which is in the second year of implementation.
Denise.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Latif, Vice Chair Jackson, members of the School Board, and Dr. McDade. I'd like to start by thanking Dr. McDade for her unwavering support for this initiative. Prince William Heals is not just about our students, it's about our staff, it's about the culture and support of our vision for our strategic plan in creating a thriving future, and that has to start with positive climate and culture. I'm going to turn the presentation over to the heart of our team, Director Slater, who has our Heals team with her. Thank you.
Good evening. Chairman Latif, Dr. McDade, and members of the Board. My name is Becca Slater, and I am proud to serve as the Director of College Career and Student Support for Prince William County Schools. This evening, I will share some information about an initiative that my department leads for the school division called PWCS Heals. My hope is that you will hear and see the impact of the collective work of hundreds of Prince William County employees. We know that the past few years have impacted the social and emotional well-being of many staff members and students. We are here tonight to show you that we are paying attention. On our logo here, you will see the hashtag that has become our mantra, "Culture of Care", being explicit about showing the love and care that we have for the students and staff of Prince William County Schools is how we begin to heal. Why healing? When we all think about the shared experiences of the past two years, many images come to mind. Stress, trauma, fear, anger, frustration, and sadness. Our emotional roller coaster has left no human being untouched. Healing is the most natural next step so we can all learn and move forward to launch our thriving futures. Why now? All PWCS staff are continuing to see the impact of our recent experiences on emotional regulation. We see it within ourselves, with our students, and with our peers. Now is the time to ensure that we have the skills needed to manage our experiences and to focus on wellness so that the students of PWCS can realize our vision for them. In response to the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic and associated school closures, Prince William County Public Schools formed the PWCS Heals Initiative as a division-wide response that focuses on the emotional well-being of students and staff. For our students, we assess emotional needs and respond with tiered intervention so that we are best positioned to remove barriers to student learning. This initiative includes resources and support for our staff as well. The work to support our students and staff was enhanced last December when VDOE approved our proposal and ARPA funds were awarded to support the PWCS Heals Initiative. Who are the people behind this initiative? We have several employees that make up our PWCS Heals team here centrally, and then many school-based employees. We have a supervisor of social and emotional learning, administrative coordinators, school counselor on special assignment, social and emotional learning coaches, healing sound engagement specialists, and support corps counselors. While some of these employee salaries are paid for through our local funds, the majority of these positions and the services of the PWCS Heals Initiative have been funded through the Prince William County Schools' American Rescue Plan funds. This evening, I would like to take a moment to recognize a few staff members who are here with me. We have Ms. Heather Wines, our Supervisor of Social and Emotional Learning. Mr. Corey Eaton. Learning, Mr. Corey Eaton, former PWCS Heals Administrative Coordinator and newly-appointed Director of School Counseling at Freedom High School, and Ms. Shannon Demesa, our School Counselor on Special Assignment, who oversees the Support Core Program. Thank you all for coming this evening. The task: The PWCS Heals Initiative brings school division, school and division support resources together to wrap around all employees and students. There is much evidence-based research available to support the school division's work in this area, but let's keep it simple this evening. In order to make our students well, we have to make the adults well first. Period. We started this work by listening to staff, assessing their needs, and offering purposeful activities designed to support their wellness. With a focus on social and emotional learning of adults and then students, and accelerating student social and emotional growth, we believe that true healing can begin to occur. By deploying trauma-informed and healing strategies, we have begun the work to address the collective and individual trauma of the past few years. Adult social and emotional learning has been focused on enhancing the knowledge of social and emotional learning as well as skills and mindsets for adults. The Career, College, and Student Support Department collaborated with our wonderful team in the Employee Benefits Department to focus efforts on adult holistic well-being, burnout prevention, and workplace balance, and ways for all of our division staff to increase self-efficacy. I want to also acknowledge our rich partnership with Kaiser Permanente and Healthier Generations to focus on this work. Prince William County Schools is beginning the work of laying the foundation to embed Virginia Department of Education's five main components of social and emotional learning into our students' experiences. Our strategic plan has lofty goals in this area which bolster our focus. You will hear often about these five components, which are social awareness, relationship skills, self-management, self-awareness, and responsible decision-making. In early 2022, VDOE released their Framework for Social and Emotional Learning for Students that also included standards that describe skills that each student within each grade level should acquire. These standards are also in alignment with Virginia's profile of a Virginia graduate. Now I want to share some information about the people behind this initiative. Social and emotional learning coaches. Some of you all may have heard this term from some of our wonderful staff members who come to speak at our school board meetings. We have 350 SEL coaches who are current school-based employees that include a variety of dedicated staff members such as teachers, school counselors, librarians, and even instructional technology coaches. Each school in the school division has between two and seven assigned coaches. Thirty central office SEL coaches have been appointed to support sixteen central office departments, trained centrally to deliver wellness resources, knowledge, and tools to utilize with all of our staff and students. These staff members have become such an important part of this initiative. Further, our social and emotional learning coaches focused on creating a systemic approach for implementation of wellness activities, worked to create a common understanding of SEL amongst the adults, clarified that SEL is not just emotional regulation, but also includes the teaching of relationship skills and decision-making skills, and focused on creating environments in which adults can offer their best selves and model SEL by providing opportunities for re-energizing, learning about burnout prevention, and creating collaborative and supportive Finally, our social and emotional learning coaches participated in a myriad of professional development sessions. Two hundred and four of our coaches representing ninety-one schools participated in the three-part training series, "Filling Your Cup", to increase knowledge on the burnout cycle. A hundred and four SEL coaches representing forty-seven schools participated in a Me Moments workshop that focused on tools for adults and students to enhance skills on self-regulation and managing emotions. Sixty-eight percent of SEL teams indicated having regular opportunities to deliver SEL-related trainings to their peers within their schools, and eighty-seven percent of SEL coaches indicated that the trainings enhanced their knowledge and ability to support SEL. Here you see some of our hard-working staff members taking time to focus on their own well-being during the 2122 school year. As a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, our need to increase school engagement, offer mental health support, and create environments which are responsive to trauma became even more evident. The norms of attending school that we took for granted had to be re-taught at the start of the 2122 school year. We recognize that for some of our students, the pandemic also brought about increased stress, anxiety, and deficits to social skills, as well as new or more acute trauma. The employees that are best suited to address the unfinished social and emotional growth of our students are sitting in our schools every single day. We are blessed to have approximately five hundred school-based mental health professionals serving our students. Beginning in March 2022, fifty of these professionals stepped up to use their skills to offer more intense support for students in need. We call this group the PWCS Support Core. Eighty-four students were serviced between March and May of 2022. We work with the student and the family unit outside of the normal school day in a non-clinical manner to increase school engagement and enhance social and emotional skills. Over eight hundred direct service hours were provided, and this summer, over one thousand phone calls were made during the month of July to students and parents and guardians who needed further support to re-engage with Prince William County Schools. The final area of focus in our PWCS Heals Initiative is trauma-informed care and healing engagement strategies. Prior to the pandemic, we had trained over four thousand of our teachers in the basic concepts of adverse childhood experiences, or ACES. We know that when adults understand the impacts of these adverse experiences on child development, we are better positioned to meet, meet each unique student's needs. When the pandemic occurred, we quickly saw that we had a large percent of our student population experiencing an unanticipated adverse childhood experience that we in the school-based mental health field never expected. In short, we never planned for this. As we returned to in-person learning, we recognized that our teachers and other student and support staff members would face situations for which they may not have the tools in their toolbox to address. To meet this need, we turned our focus to filling those toolboxes with the right tools. We knew that we need to move from a stance of what happened to you to what's right with you, to create a positive environment of thriving for our students and staff. The next group of employees I would like to highlight is our Healing Center Engagement Specialists. Once again, we had eighty school-based mental health professionals step forward to learn and to serve. Assigned to support schools with developing plans to increase positive school culture and climate, these employees are making a difference. We created a training that over four thousand five hundred of our teachers engaged in surrounding trauma-informed care and healing practices. This training received a four out of five rating, and eighty-two percent of teachers participating indicated that the training would positively impact their classroom practices. We created and provided gratitude to over seven hundred bus drivers, bus attendants, and bus mechanics prior to the start of their mornings, and mind you, this was at 4:30 a.m., provided over two hundred and fifty central staff members with wellness-at-work information, and eighteen of our specialists are now dedicated to work with our colleagues in the Student Management and Alternative Programs Department to provide direct individualized support for students who have been involved with the discipline process. As I have stated throughout this presentation, equipping staff with the right tools to meet student needs was at the forefront of much of the work we conducted during the 2122 school year. We have several education options for staff members and students to help all of us better understand positive mental health and the need to pay attention when we see something wrong. Thirty of our PWCS professionals are trained to teach a course called Youth Mental Health First Aid. Full-day youth mental health first aid sessions are offered at least, at least once per month throughout the school year. Over four thousand staff members trained on trauma-informed care and the importance of understanding adverse childhood experiences. Over one hundred fifty staff members have participated in a self-paced course on managing stress and resiliency. And finally, our Signs of Suicide lesson, delivered by trained mental health professionals, was sent, was delivered to nineteen thousand nine hundred and forty students in the 2122 school year. In 2020, we launched our first division-wide parent emotional needs assessment. We learned that the parents and guardians were ready to share important information about students that may not have been collected in any other manner. We built upon that foundation in 2021 and began assessing the needs of students from both the parent guardian and student lens. The results have allowed our school-based mental health professionals to launch targeted support to the students with the most need. We are pleased that this short emotional needs assessment has now become the way we do business in PWCS. For the 2122 school year, we had six thousand five hundred parent guardians participate in the student needs assessment. Over fifty-three thousand of our students in grades three to twelve participated in the student social and emotional needs assessment, and our social workers were able to immediately reach out and offer basic need support to eight hundred and seventy-four families. So far in the 2223 school year, we have already heard from over two thousand three hundred parents and guardians as part of our survey. To date, almost fifty thousand of our students in grades three to twelve have responded to the student social and emotional needs assessment. As I mentioned early in this presentation, we know that we cannot do this work alone. We need the support of our community, of our parents and guardians, and essential business partners. To that end, we have built strong collaborative partnerships with several national and local businesses and organizations. Through these relationships, PWCS is able to gain access to research-based strategies and resources from leaders in the field of adult and student wellness and social and emotional learning. Some highlights from our partnership are Kaiser Permanente provided eight virtual workshops geared towards physical and emotional health for our division staff, and four specialized virtual workshops for our bus drivers, bus attendants, and custodial staff. Kaiser Permanente is engaging in a monthly Did You Know visuals to promote adult wellness and provide monthly virtual workshops. Healthier Generations partnered with SEL coaches to conduct a thriving schools integrated assessment within each of our schools. Healthy Gener-, Healthier Generations also provided twelve workshops for our SEL coaches with over three hundred participants, and will continue to provide training workshops. Our SEL supervisor, who is here with us this evening, Ms. Heather Wines, was selected to participate in the Fellows Academy to gain further knowledge and insight into research-based SEL practices. And Ms. Wines was also invited recently to be a panelist for the Change for Good Forum, led by the Healthy Schools Campaign that was attended by over four hundred participants from across the country, including representatives from the U.S. Department of Education and the U.S. Surgeon General's Office. We continue to partner with our, um, with Spark to enhance our local partnerships that benefit the health and well-being of our students and staff. In closing, I want each of you to know that our work is not done. Our goals for our second year of this initiative are specifically aligned with the Launching Thriving Futures Strategic Plan and specifically set to address Commitment 2.1 and 2.2 that focus on positive climate and culture. For our social and emotional learning programming, we will have ongoing and continued training around promoting social and emotional learning specifically to our students. Continuation of supporting well-being practices for staff and increasing knowledge of the VDOE standards. In trauma-informed care and healing engagement programming, we will have a second series of teacher training, and we will be teaching staff about universal precautions and trauma-informed practices in our classrooms. Our Support Core will expand services to additional schools, and we will also focus on improvement of attendance and dropout interventions. Thank you for your time this evening to talk about the PWCS Heals Initiative. As a leader, I see such promise in focusing on the mental health and well-being of our community. I want to give a special recognition to our Associate Superintendent, Mrs. Heebner, who is here with us this evening, and to Dr. McDade. Both of these people believed in my team and I, and placed faith in our vision. Because of this, we will continue to make each day better for all the Prince William County Schools students and staff members. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report, and if there are any questions from the board related to the PWCS Heals Initiative, I know that Denise and Ms. Heebner and her team are ready to take any questions that you might have.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you. I don't have, um, at least right now, I don't have any questions. What I will say as someone who has followed this topic for several years and was here under the previous administration, I, I don't have enough arms and fingers to applaud you in going from a siloed, voluntary approach to a division-wide, inclusive, systematic approach that starts with our adults who our students and our young people look to, to model good behavior, how to handle themselves in, in schools. I, I am just so appreciative and really overwhelmed and taken back in the best way positive by this presentation. It is so well-laid out. It speaks to our strategic plan so thoroughly, and I think for me, going through the experiences that we have in the past two years and not having the opportunity to really explain to our public by itself what social and emotional learning is, to clear up some of the misinformation that's out there floating around, um, to provide this opportunity for our public to really understand and see what our program is about, how it affects our staff and our students, is just an amazing opportunity. I am so grateful because I know that there are so many within our division that don't come from homes with parents, or homes period, or have generational knowledge to pass some of these skills on to the young people so that they can grow up and then model it for other young people. I, I'm just excited because this is a norm in the world, in corporate America, and so many nonprofits, that our students will graduate and then not have to relearn this type of culture. They will already be prepared to dive right in and show their skills, and that is what some of our employers are looking for. And to give them this advanced start and to know through this program that they are cared for, that they are respected, is something that I've been waiting for, for a very long time, and I know so many others have. Again, I just can't tell you how, thank you, Dr. McDade, and to all of your team, how much I appreciate that this is an inclusive program in our division. And I don't mean inclusive just because it involves our staff and students, but it's embedded in every aspect of our school division and culture. And, and finally, I just want to, I, I'm just overwhelmed, but I'm, I'm excited that we're no longer siloing. I can't wait to hear the updates for the remainder of the year, and I'll just stop there. Thank you so much for initiating this program and providing this opportunity for the public to really understand what social and emotional learning looks like.
Ms. Jessie?
When Dr. McDade came here, I said to her, "I want you to walk on water." "I don't know what you're doing. I think you're swimming, walking, gliding. You have a boat? You have a yacht? I, I don't know. I don't understand why you still look so good because I don't know when you sleep." Uh, this, this lady and this staff, this school division has been turned upside down and around, and I just want to thank you guys for this. We have some friends whose father died, uh, who have grandkids whose father died this year, this year, thirty-seven years old, and they're going to middle. And so he said, "I don't know what I'm going to do." And my only advice to him was that someone has to listen to the silence, listen to their silence. These kids give us warnings. The metal detectors are going to detect the metal, but something happens before the metal hits the school. And having people in the building to address not just the student needs, but the adult needs and central office and staff because all of us have been traumatized. I think my husband and I are learning how to go out and eat dinner again. It, it's, it's very interesting what this COVID response has done. But I think the good thing about this has been, it has driven us to, made us stop and think that everything is not all about ABCs, learning your ABCs and your numbers and all these things. It's about knowing who you are. It's about knowing who you are. And when I talked about Dr. Icarne today, I talked to a student when Justin and I were there, and I talked to this young lady, and she said, uh, I said, "What's going on?" I was just, you know, kind of hanging out with her. "What's going on?" She said, "Well, I'm here because I got involved with the wrong group, and my mother came to school, and that wasn't good. And then my mother was upset because she felt I'd been bullied, but she said, "I'm glad I'm here because now I have a small group." So the schools, those specialized schools help us. But most of our kids, before they go to Dr. Icarne School, independent, they give us signals, and I think it's great that you guys have all these signals. I want to ask a question. I'm not sure I understood. There were so many staff positions that I could, I just gave up trying to figure out. How many are volunteers and how many are paid staff? And the third question is, where did you find these people?
So Ms. Jessie, I will let Director Slater talk about that. And I think one of the things I would like to just emphasize is the majority of the work in the schools that is being done in the schools, these are our employees. They're the heart of our division. They are our mental health professionals. And those are the people who know our children and are there on a day-to-day basis, and those are the ones who are changing the culture. I'm sorry, I don't know if Dr. or Mr. Mrs. Slater wants to answer, uh, enhance that.
So when we put out the call to see if people were willing to step forward and do something different, we were immediately amazed with how many people said yes without even knowing the details. And I think it's important for everyone to understand that. The heart is there with the teachers and the staff in the school division. We are funding these positions currently with the American Rescue Plan funds. So these are supplemental pay positions right now, an hourly rate of pay. But again, you'd be amazed at the number of people before we even said anything about pay that raised their hand.
One thing I just want to add and be clear about, can you explain, Rebecca, the fact that the school, a lot of the school-based employees were existing employees and these weren't new FTE that were added? But, but these are educators in the building that stepped up and willing to go the extra mile and then, then their pay is being supplemented by the ARPA funds. Can you explain that just because it sounds like it's, you know, three hundred and fifty new?
Correct.
And that's not the case?
Right. We, very quickly, when we started to plan for this initiative, we could see that hiring new staff was not going to be an option, so we went to our existing staff members. So when you, I talked about the different roles. All of our SEL coaches and Healing Center Engagement Specialists are all current Prince William County employees who have stepped forward to do work outside of school hours and to be compensated for time outside of school hours to support this initiative. And our Support Corps counselors as well are another group that work only outside of school hours and are compensated for their time, but they're existing employees.
And can you also, I'm sorry, one thing, can you also add about some of the, I think it's important to note the Support Corps, that they do home visits and things like that?
Yeah, so our Support Corps counselors are, you know, trained school-based mental health professionals. So we have people who are already highly skilled in assessing for any mental health concerns that may exist. But we do try to be clear that it is non-clinical. It is more mentoring in nature. And yes, as soon as, as we could, when we first started in this, we were still in masks and doing a lot of distancing and things like that. And the minute that we could, they started going into homes. So they are now going into homes, working with parents and guardians. That is a really big focus for the Support Corps counselors. We want to work with the entire family unit. So those staff members, again, working outside of school hours, nights, weekends, um, working, you know, in person, virtually. We've got people meeting at libraries, meeting in school cafeterias to be able to offer these students some more targeted support so they stay engaged and they can be academically successful.
I just want to say that this is a program that was needed, and I love the goals and objectives and is proactive instead of reactive. And I, the training, I think, is really important because, you know, you can tell people to counsel people, but they don't know. Like you can go and just talk to people, but it's very precise. And I don't know how you guys put this thing together in this short period of time, but like, Ms. Williams, I'm amazed, and I'm just really pleased to see this program. Thank you very much.
Ms. Wall and then Ms. Zargarpur.
Thank you, Chairman Lutif. Um, thank you for this presentation. I learned a lot about what we have going on with PWCS Heals. And I, there was a lot that I didn't, I didn't know and I didn't realize, so I appreciate that. I have two questions. My first question has to do with parents. And so my, my question is for parents who may want to learn more about what this program is or want to understand it more deeply. I know you mentioned that there are VDOE standards on emotional, social and emotional learning. So would, is that something that, can we find information, can parents find information on our website? Where's the best way to go, to, where to go to find information? And also, is there a particular curriculum that we are following, or is it mostly the VDOE standards? And then just like best practices within the counseling world? I'm not really sure. So if you can.
I can definitely answer about where parents can go for more information about social and emotional learning. So the Virginia Department of Education standards are public information, and they have an SEL website set up. We also have a social and emotional learning website where we have linked to all these valuable resources. The brains behind the organization is Ms. Wines over there. As far as specific curriculum, we do not have a specific curriculum that we are deploying right now. We are using the VDOE standards. And we are working, if you peruse the strategic plan in your spare time, you will see multiple goals about the work that we'll do over the next three years to really look at our existing curriculum in different subject areas and different grade levels and find where are the intersections where we can just be a little bit more intentional with things like relationship skills, with things like decision-making. That's the work that lies ahead for us. So those VDOE standards are really our guide, and that is public information.
Thank you very much. And my second question has to do with the, it's on slide sixteen, eighteen specialists dedicated to work with student management and alternative programs. And I know, I, my question is, I wonder, is this a guaranteed offer? Is this something that we say, you don't get to, you know, we're going to provide you this support? Or do we do it as kind of an opt-in, like it's available if you want it? Do you see what I'm saying? Like, do we like, how, how proactive are we in reaching out to children who have, are going through our disciplinary process and providing a specialist to work directly with them, even if they maybe don't think they need it? Or if they do need it?
So, um, this, the, the work of the Healing Center Engagement Specialists that are working with our student management program is in its infancy right now. So as far as protocols for who a person is going to, you know, be assigned to or which student is going to be, you know, asked to meet with one of these specialists, those are not finalized at this time. So, um, you know, when I, when I think about the work, you know, we did have the funds last school year. We actually didn't start any of the work until about February. So that is still in the planning stages right now. But we have identified the people, and my wonderful colleague, Dara Duggar, who leads that office, is currently working with those employees to examine, you know, what is it that a student needs who has made a mistake? And, and what kind of support can we give them to learn from that?
And I'm just going to step in and answer a little bit of that. We do have dedicated staff that work through this mapped office. And when we identify a particular need, we connect those. The idea was actually born out of the collaboration between the two departments and the two offices when we recognized the need. We do look at trends in data and implement, you know, some, some re-healing and restorative practices. And we did borrow some of our Healing Center Engagement Specialists, and then the light went on, and we said, "Aha, this is something we need on a regular basis so that we can provide more support to help our students get back into what we want to be as a positive and thriving future."
Thank you. I appreciate that because, you know, going through that discipline and process can be, it can be life-changing for students. If it's handled and approached in the right way, you know, it can really turn them around. And so I do appreciate the efforts that are being made to help this particular cohort of students. Thank you. I don't have any further questions.
Ms. Zargarpur.
Thank you. Um, this was an amazing presentation. I, I was very interested in everything you had to say. I would like to just focus on one little part, and it said here on slide seven, adult social and emotional learning. It talks about holistic well-being, burnout prevention imbalance and self-efficacy. And I'm assuming you're talking about the adults who are working in our division. I happen to just have read an article about burnout prevention in early career teachers and what that does. Are we going to be moving to looking at burnout in our, in our employees? This seems reactive. Now, that's not a criticism because we've just been through a pandemic. But there's really, there's a body of research. It talks about, you know, the emotional toll that burnout can take on people. And depending on where you are in your career, how it can push people in one place or another. So are we going to maybe be able to expand into a professional place where we're really looking at our teachers and what burnout would mean for them?
So we are working with our partners in human resources and Kaiser Permanente to really offer a preventative and proactive with wanting our employees to take care of themselves. Our goal is to prevent that burnout. As far as a research or a study, I would have to, you know, defer to the Human Resources Department on that. But our goal is really to support the teachers to prevent that and help them recognize signs of how that they, they can take care of themselves to.
There's, yeah, there's also a body of work on compassion fatigue, which is, you'll find with nurses, police, fire, doctors, teachers. It's something I've, I've keep bumping up against, and I, I have an opportunity in my life now to do a little more research. So this is one of the things I am interested in. So thank you.
Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Lutif. Um, thank you for the presentation and for staying this evening to give it. It was very informative. Because we have to see the whole child in order to access the standards, I kind of equate SEL tools to like the snacks that a student, a teacher would keep in their classrooms because to see the, feed the whole child and, you know, in order to teach them. I just, I had a question about the standards, which you answered, and then I went to the website, and the, the VDOE is list, is hyperlinked on the PWCS EDU, so that was helpful. So thank you. And then the last one is from a parental perspective, the, I think it was the social emotional needs assessment. Can you please just detail the relationship between parents and the students in the social emotional needs assessment? And like, like when it's given or would you, when would you alert a parent, like, you know, just?
So, um, thank you for that question. So the parent guardian needs assessment is launched at the start of each school year. That is sent to all parents via email, and our wonderful communications team also puts out information about it on social media so that they can provide us with input. The student social and emotional needs assessment is conducted throughout the month of September, and that is for grades three to twelve. Parents are given advanced information about that needs assessment, and we place a preview on the website for them to view before the needs assessment is conducted. It is quite short. When you think about a third grader and asking them about, you know, how they're feeling and if they're happy or if they're sad, you know, we really are focused on very short, concise questions that allow us to render aid if we see that aid needs to be rendered. So parent guardian started the school year every year, and the student social emotional needs assessment throughout the month of September.
Could I just clarify if, would you notify the parent or guardian if there was a red flag? Or it's just to clarify?
That is something that I was stepping forward, that we use the assessment and the student information to connect with parents to form a plan, respecting parents' rights and knowledge that they need, that they're the primary person who takes the wellness and the care for their child. So we always do include parents in that process.
I, thank you. Mind reader, thank you.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you. I just wanted to provide some really instant feedback on that. My household, we took the survey at the beginning of last year. I noticed some things that made me concerned about my elementary school student who was virtual. Not only did I receive feedback from the virtual school staff, because I was able to communicate with them that my student was having some issues, but his base school, the guidance counselor, the social worker, and myself were able to develop a plan where he, his needs were serviced from the school directly, which I think is an important thing to note because so many of our families, whether you have health insurance or not, mental health services, not only they're hard to find, but sometimes are not covered well through health insurance plans. So at my household, we were fortunate to be able to go seek mental health outside of the school facility. But it was comforting to me as a parent to know that his needs were being met within the school day. Resources were provided for me as a parent so that I could continue my education on his issues and learn and support him as a parent. And then also directed to places where I could receive outside assistance as well. So I just wanted to kind of explain to some parents, we, it was very simple, like fill the survey out. Within, I think, a week, I had a social worker reaching out to me, "Is this accurate? How can we, you know, schedule some time to talk and discuss some issues? And how can we make a plan to best help your student?" In my case, we continued on, and my child is in a much better place socially, emotionally, because of the start of that program. Because it was nice to be enveloped around him in our home environment, in our school environment, and then outside in the community. So I think that's a really good example of just, I think it took me maybe three minutes to fill out the survey, and the response was quick and a plan was put into place. So I thought that might provide some further feedback from Ms. Jackson's question and also to the public of how simple and easy it works and how involved a parent or a guardian is in this process. And just a reminder, we inundate parents with information. I know a lot of parents are like, "Oh, my goodness, another email." But these are things that come through on emails, and it's important to, to check as often as you can. Thank you. I appreciate that, Ms. Williams. I do want to emphasize it is about the partnership with the family and the parents. And the information that has been shared with us has really given our teams and our school teams the opportunity to connect with parents. That's the goal.
Well, it, this has been a terrific presentation. On a, on a artistic note, Ms. Wall and I enjoyed the slides. The background of the slides, fantastic, whoever did that. Good, good thematic approach there. You know, Plato said that all learning has an emotional base. That was two thousand years ago, right? It's like it's, we're still talking about it. I mean, it is so important, the work you're doing, you know, as, it's the right thing to do. It's the kind of work that we need to do to make sure, you know, we're not just a place for ninety thousand students, but we're fifteen thousand employees of some sort, part-time or full-time. And this is the kind of work that we want to do, as you pointed out well, is create a positive culture and climate. And God knows, you know, after the pandemic, the SEL, you know, our frustrations, anger, bitterness, whatever you may call it, mine is well documented. But the, um, the, you know, we all need this, and it's, it's really good. And, and, and so it's the right thing to do, but, so, so one question I had, just real quickly, slide eighteen. So we have the needs assessments. Do, do we have a tool to assess whether what we did worked or helped? Or do we, do we have a way to follow up? You know, and I don't know if that's just a counselor one-on-one thing, or if it's something that we do regularly?
So we absolutely do have tools to be able to follow up. I mean, that looks very different depending on the situation, but our school counselors are very used to doing what we call a pre and a post test, and it looks different with an individual or a group or a classroom. But to say, "Okay, what did you know when we started? How did you feel when we started?" And, and asking those same questions again after we put forward the intervention. So that's, yes, that is a, a tool of the trade for us as school counselors, that we always try to see. We want to answer that question, "How is this student different because of my work with them?"
Yeah.
And that is our focus in every interaction. And the school counselors in this school division are some of the most amazing people that I have seen work with students, especially in this past year. And so, again, they're, they're assessing, they're looking at that data. We also have really worked to integrate some questions in our division-wide survey to be able to assess some of those, you know, how are we growing? How are we changing? How are we feeling about our positive climate and culture as well? So I think that those are some good examples.
Well, I mean, I think your, your sentence there of what the counselor does, how our work has changed the person, the student. I mean, that's what every teacher and all of us in the school division is trying to do every day. And so I think you just nailed it, I mean, you know, in a nice way encapsulated everything we're trying to do here, all of us. And, and your work really does, you know, really align with our strategic plan, you know. And so I said, this is the right thing to do, so that's great. But also, as you look at corporate America or you look at the free market, the free market has said, "We look at companies and organizations ESG, their environment, their social and their governance." their governance. And, you know, as with our sustainability plan, we were recognized for that. You know, AAA bond ratings are given out, you know, the rating agencies are looking at all these things now that they've added to how they look at a company. You know, what kind of culture and climate do they have there? What is their social? What is their governance? What is the kind of things they're doing for their employees? And, you know, we were recognized by Forbes for being the best school division to work for in the Commonwealth. And I think this will just continue to build on that work that we've already done. Ms. Heebner, you know, kudos to you for carrying us through a lot of the pandemic. And now you're, you know, you're still hanging around and doing this work. This work nicely, and I'm very happy, you know, I mean, it really is, you know, as you go to slide, the one where we talk about how it lines up with the strategic plan. Now, that is the guide for the work we're doing and it's really, it lines up nicely. And I think we'll get to our goals by doing this work together. We really appreciate it. Ms., Dr. McDade, you weren't here, but Jen Wall and I love the slides. We love the thematic approach here with the space. So, you know, outstanding work, team. Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Dr. McDade, turn it back over to you.
I want to thank Denise Heebner as well as Rebecca Slater and her entire team. When I first came on board, Rebecca was one of the first employees to come and talk to me about the work that needed to happen. And she was so incredibly passionate and, you know, really made sure that I understood, you know, what was at hand and what we needed to do about it. And I was fully on board as soon as I heard about the plans and the initiative. And so I want to thank you for even educating me on a lot of things in ways that we can be creative and innovative in our practices and our approach. And you and your team have been able to accomplish things that, you know, many probably thought was impossible, but you did do it. And it also is a testament to our staff and educators in our buildings and their willingness to step up and go above and beyond in service to our students and to our families. So thank you so much and awesome presentation this evening. That concludes my report. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. McDade. Excellent report. And we are now moving on to Board Matters. I think, where did we start last time? Which side do you want me to start on? Okay. So we'll go to Ms. Jessie.
Hi. Okay, thank you. Well, I had two site visits and one big activity that I'd like to talk about. Justin Wilkes and I went to Independence and we realized that we probably negligent as a board and not just me and him going to that school. And so we were patting ourselves on the back of, well, at least we're here. And then I had, I said, who has been to the detention center? And I realized I've been here all this time, I've never been to the detention center. And those are our kids too. And so we went to the detention center and I know he has some thoughts about it, but I don't know, it was just, I don't know how to describe it because there was just something happened when I walked into that facility with the large doors that bang and the small beds that hung out from the side and these kids that probably, if they had gotten some social and emotional support, would not be there. And so I just want, I want to thank Rita Goss who tried to prepare us. She said, first of all, you can't go in with anything. You can't take your keys. You can't, I thought, oh, my God, we're going to be in there by ourselves without our keys and everything. But I want to thank you for providing that support. The other thing, I think I have a slide for Fannie Fitzgerald for the Courageous Four. Okay, so Yolanda Green and the historian, Historic Commission have put up this historic marker for the Courageous Four. The Courageous Four women, Fannie Fitzgerald, Zella Brown, Maxine Coleman and Mrs. Porter, Lillian Porter. These were four women that were sent to a school overnight to integrate the school system. I was a speaker because many people think that I named Fannie Fitzgerald and that I was the person behind it. But I was not the person. It was really Denise McPhail, who I think you met her with K-PAC. She sent out a list, she sent out to several of us and said, who would like to help with this naming? And I sent back my name, I said, I would, because I knew Fannie. What I didn't know was that Mr. Saunders, Herb Saunders, selected these four women and said overnight, rather than integrating our schools with students, they integrated with these women overnight, he sent them. And that the new thing that I've come to realize after all of these years, to be honest with you, was that I stand on the shoulders of Fannie Fitzgerald. Because when Fannie Fitzgerald decided she no longer wanted to be at Central, which is where he placed her next, he replaced her with me. And I didn't realize that until about two or three years ago. I said, oh, my God. Because honestly, he picked people and he picked me to be a supervisor of Title I without knowing me and without an interview. And I'm saying that to say that sometimes you open doors for people and this happens. And I also want to say that in fourth grade, I also had the opportunity to talk about Virginia history. It never occurred to me that during the massive resistance, although I read about it and I scanned over it, I didn't realize that in Prince Edward County that these students were not allowed to go to, African-American students were kept out of schools for five years. So if you imagine that, by the time you hit first grade, you were 11. There were grants given to the students that were, who were white kids and middle-class kids. The other thing that I did not realize, Justin decided that, and they wanted to rename Godwin. As it turns out, Mr. Godwin was part of the massive resistance. So we supported that as a school division. And my thoughts were, why would you put the name of a person who kept kids out of school for five years on a building? So I know my husband, Mr. Jesse, by the way, I never know what Mr. Jesse is going to say. I never do. I don't want to know. But he made a point that in African-American history, we don't know our history. And Fannie Fitzgerald, I will say this, she and I were very close, her family and I were very close. They thought, they just, every year I got a Christmas present from her saying, thank you. But at the end of the day, she, when I called her and said, what we were going to do, she said, how? I didn't think anybody cared. Her last statement to me was this, and she had lost her memory, she forgot I had anything to do with it. I will, I will close with this. And she said the following. She came back to my car because I took her to lunch and she said, did you know they named a school after me? So she lost everything, but she remembered that, she did remember me, but she remembered that that school was named after. So what you guys did tonight for Bob Icon, I want to thank you because he's going to be alive and he will see, and it may well mean a lot to him. Thank you. And I know I'm over time. Thank you.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. So I would like to officially welcome Chance, even though he's gone. And I'm so excited to hear from our public speakers this evening during public comment time that he was at robotics. I love robotics. And I now have a robotics child again. So go robotics. And it was very nice to hear him speak so eloquently and explain to students and listening public more about our CIP and the security efforts that we have in our schools. And to speak to the African-American history elective, as Ms. Jessie was just speaking about, you know, it should be embedded in history, period. There were Africans here before the Atlantic slave trade commenced. And I think, you know, American history is just that, it's American history. And I think it's important that it is done inclusively. And I know there are conversations at the state level to make that an AP level class that was counted for credit, not just an elective, but part of our curriculum. And I would love to hear more about that from the state level in the future. I just also want to congratulate, well, moving on, excuse me, congratulate the principal of Freedom High School as well as the principal of Fred Lynn on the first, because they are new principals, their first back-to-school nights. They were both very successful events. And I don't think I've ever seen anyone give a 30-minute, very well-thought-out, concise welcome and greeting and information to parents in both English and Spanish and have them off and running to their students' classes on time. That was just amazing. Congratulations, Mr. Romero, on doing that. Freedom High School had a wonderful display of community resources as well as activities in the school for parents and students to participate in. And then the evening ensued into a football game, which I was not able to attend, but it was nice to see all that school spirit. I'm excited to be able to attend the VSBA Legislative Conference later this week. And I want to formally apologize for events that I had RSVP'd to but would not, was not able to attend due to a death in the family. So I'll provide updates about the Racial and Social Justice Commission meeting that occurred last week. I am sorry to have missed Afghan Day because I did RSVP and as Ms. Jessie so politely showed us the Courageous Four dedication marker. I will continue to advocate for a meeting for joint board, a meeting between this board and the Board of County Supervisors so that we can explain to the public where one board meets the other and how our protocols and operating procedures work independently and collaboratively for the betterment of our community. I also would encourage the division to possibly reintroduce parents to information on what to do during emergency procedures, because I think that's something that we can always highlight for our parents, because anything can happen during the day. And I think it's good for all of us to know what we should and should not do. And I just want to spend my last two seconds of overtime thanking Dr. McDade again for the Prince William Heels Program and aligning it not only to what's going on in our society and schools division, but to VDOE standards, because I think often parents think that sometimes we just do things here in Prince William willy-nilly. But everything we do is aligned to our strategic plan and to the state standard. So thank you.
Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. I, to start out, I thoroughly enjoyed Gainesville High School's first-ever Home Far City Football Game on September 9th. It was against Battlefield and it was a ton of fun. There was an awesome crowd there that night from both the home team and the visiting team. And I have to say, it's just so great to see this school take flight. I've attended back-to-school nights at Bull Run, Middle and Reagan Middle so far, as well as Battlefield, which I spoke about before. Due to a scheduling conflict, I was not able to make it to Unity Braxton, but I am looking for an opportunity to come out to the school and visit with the folks there. I really value the opportunity to visit with families, students and teachers. And so these back-to-school nights are a great opportunity for me to accomplish my goals of student achievement, parent involvement, safe and welcoming schools and opportunities for all. So I appreciate the opportunity to visit with families. I'm looking forward to getting out to the elementary schools coming up this week, starting, or next week, starting with Alvie and Gravely and then Mountain View the following week and Sudley, Tyler, Sinclair and Mullen in the weeks to come after that. Next week, I will be attending professional development to better understand Title IX. I feel that it's important that I gain a greater understanding of our division's policies and their enforcement. And it's my belief that prevention and thorough investigations are the best way to manage risk and foster a safe and healthy school environment for all of our students. This past weekend, I held office hours on Saturday with Ms. Jackson of the Brentsville District and we had a productive conversation with a number of parents and I appreciate hearing their concerns and comments. And in particular, I feel like it is important to encourage dialogue, especially on sensitive issues. So thank you to those who came out to meet with us. I am looking forward to the Colgan Classic, which is a marching band event, because I am a former band parent. I guess once you're a band parent, you're always a band parent. I love to cheer the students who spend so much time and effort on putting together a great show. And I know sometimes, you know, during halftime, they're performing and the crowd is not paying attention. So I would encourage everybody to pause and give these, these student performers their due and give them the respect that they need as they put on an amazing show for you at halftime. Some of you may know, I serve on Safe Schools Advisory Council. We meet monthly. We had our first meeting of the year. Safety and security is one of my top priorities and I know it's a top priority of the superintendent as well. I take very seriously the comments that were shared tonight from the community about their concerns for the safety of their students. I appreciate the difficulty it is to get in here and speak honestly and authentically about concerns like that. And I just want you to know that, you know, I'm listening, we're listening, we are trying to do everything that we can with the resources that we have and it's very, very important to us. Of note to the larger community, the county's comp plan is under review and up for a vote on October 11th. And I want to mention that I'm collaborating with Brentsville District to schedule a listening session at Brentsville High School for next Tuesday evening, the 27th, regarding the comp plan 2040. I encourage the public to become informed about this because what is in the comp plan will impact our schools and our neighborhoods, the capacity of our schools and all kinds of aspects of our schools. And so, you know, there has been some interest, but I still feel like people are under-informed and under-engaged on this issue. So I would encourage people to look into that. Some of you may know that VDOE is replacing the 2021 model policies for transgender students with 2022 model policies that support positive and safe learning environments for all students while respecting the rights and values of parents. And I applaud the effort to protect and encourage respect for all students. And I agree, we have responsibility to address the treatment of transgender students with necessary compassion and respect. There is a public comment on those draft model policies. People might not be aware of that, but the comment period opens on September 26th and more information can be found on the VDOE website, specifically the Virginia Regulatory Town Hall website. So the public can enroll, can sign up and make comments on those policies. To close, I will leave you with a few thoughts for the American, from the American essayist, Ralph Waldo Emerson. And these are, these appertain to the beginning of the school year. Enthusiasm is one of the most powerful engines of success. When you do a thing, do it with all your might. Put your whole soul into it. Stamp it with your own personality. Be active, be energetic, be enthusiastic and faithful and you will accomplish your object. Nothing great was ever achieved without enthusiasm. So I would say to all at the start of this year, let's keep going, let's lean into learning, let's be enthusiastic and let's celebrate our strengths and work hard to accomplish our goals. And with that, to all, a good night.
Ms. Argapour.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I miss our little eye of sore and timekeeping thing, so give me the evil eye, please. All right. It's, yes, but it's not the eye. So I want to reiterate again to Cole's Elementary School, congratulations on your Blue Ribbon Award. My quote won't be nearly as poetic as Ms. Wall's, but if you go to the nationalbluerebbinschools.edu.gov site, there is a quote, and I think this is something very important for everyone to know, quote, "The award is both a high aspiration and a potent resource of practitioner knowledge." I want everyone to understand how, how much goes into preparing your kids for everything they do, from the parents in the community, to the teachers, to the principals and all the people who are working with our children, they are part of earning this award. Families and educators work together, educational leaders hold high standards for both teaching and learning. So congratulations again. My back-to-school nights have been primarily in the middle schools. I had an opportunity to go out to Saunders and I was thrilled to hear about how many of our students are coming back into our instrumental programs. But I do understand, and I've already addressed this in an email to the superintendent's office, that we are experiencing so many kids interested in these programs that they're having trouble finding instruments. So I hope we can solve that problem. Benton Middle School had their sixth grade night and one of the things that thrilled me that night was in speaking with some of the students, their favorite class was, drumroll, please, math. No, math, I know, right? I was thrilled. It was great to hear that. Parkside Middle School, I went to earlier this week, they have the Cambridge and the World Languages Program. And I think it's really nice to hear about how these students can earn up to four high school credits before they leave middle school. Cambridge is more a, an approach to teaching, I think, or approach to teaching and learning more than a system of particular classes. And I know their staff is getting some professional development on that, so I'm excited to hear what they learn from it. I had an opportunity to go to Afghan Day. My husband is from Afghanistan originally, so I got to hang out with all my Afghan friends, assalam, ho astin, all right. And I got to go to the Bennett Community PTO event last Friday, which was fantastic. There were, I think everybody came. It looked like everybody came. But I want to recognize Mr. Oliver, who drives one of the buses. All of the kids absolutely love you. The parents love you. Great job. Keep it up. Last thing I want to mention is I'm looking forward to the other back-to-school nights that will be coming. Unfortunately, so many of the elementary schools are all on one night, so I hope to get out to other events at the elementary schools. And with 12 seconds left, I give it over to Mr.
Mr. Wilk.
Mr. Wilk. Mr. Wilk.
Thank you. First, Dr. Latif, two good meetings you've run. I don't give a lot of compliments to you always, but I think these have been very good meetings. Over the past two weeks, I made, Ms. Jessie's mentioned this, school visits to Independence Non-Traditional, the County Juvenile Detention Center, and then I went to Montclair Elementary School last Friday, ran into our deputy superintendent. Attended back-to-school nights in all three of our middle schools, my middle schools, Potomac Middle, Potomac Shores, and Grand Park. I also attended another Forest Park varsity football game last Friday, and last night a girls' varsity volleyball game at Potomac High School. Prior to the pandemic, I used to host monthly office hours at the Panera off of 234 on Fortuna Plaza in Dumfries. This weekend, I will be hosting my first hours in Southbridge for the families of Eagle Point, Southbridge, Potomac Shores, Mary Williams, and Swans Creek families. As of 9:00 PM, all sessions are booked, but I will be doing sessions and scheduling for October and November. A couple of things briefly I want to talk, reemphasize, with safety and rigor. I continually have expressed my support for school resource officers. Unfortunately, our police department does not have the number of officers to provide SROs in every building. As a result, I want to reemphasize this again, we as the Division and School Board have added additional security specialists to our secondary buildings and are in the process of bringing 60 new specialists to our elementary schools. Last year, when I petitioned about having more opportunities for parents to become more engaged in their schools at the high school and the elementary level, I was told that there'd be opportunities for them to be more involved when it came to things like monitoring halls or expansion of watchdog programs in our elementary schools. I look forward to hearing about how those are going in my Potomac schools. I remain committed to the enforcement of code of behavior, and I support our administration in removing those who bring weapons and do harm to other students and staff in our buildings. And finally, I support the exploration of other methods of preventing weapons from entering our schools. Finally, in the past, under previous administration, there was an emphasis at schools of not assigning homework. As a parent of two elementary students in our county, I would like to see a reemphasized focus, I'm speaking for myself here, on helping students develop and acquire fundamental skills. Our teachers are doing phenomenal work, but we need to support them and look to update our current homework policies to reinforce key concepts and rigor with core skills like spelling, reading, writing, and grammar all across our schools. With that, good night, thank you.
Ms. Jackson?
Thank you. I'm going to start by thanking and recognizing my two nominees, one from the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Sustainability, and the other one from Equity. The first nominee for sustainability is Hurya Tanoli. Ms. Tanoli is the president of the ECO in the 12th Grade A at Patriot. She's committed to science and sustainability, as evidenced by her advocacy and enrollment in AP classes. She wanted me to make sure that I emphasize that her family is from Pakistan, and they've been struck with horrific flooding that has left 33 million people displaced, that scientists have found the root of these floods were due to climate change, that she's always been passionate about the environmental issues, and this crisis has hit home. She wants to make a difference, she wants to have the power to make sure that she's doing something so that her home is now safe and sustainable by being part of this council, and she knows she's having her voice heard and taking action for a better environment. I'd also like to thank Ms. Natalie Goduero, who is both a parent and a parent liaison in the Brentsville District at Ellis Elementary. She had worked many jobs in the school system and is very familiar with our schools as a parent. She's committed to ensuring that students and families can access our school system. She replying her knowledge and experience to the council, and I'm grateful for both of their services. I receive positive feedback on the board newsletters, so thank you both. The intent of the newsletter is to keep the community updated with local magistrate updates and what board members are doing, so I would advise that people continue to monitor the website for agenda topics, because we have to tone in the articles early. Collective Bargaining FAQs have been updated, and I appreciate that, whoever updated it. Ms. Wall and I will continue to hold the office hours that she talked about, and we are planning to arrange a listening session in collaboration with the Planning Commissioner to bring awareness to the upcoming changes to the comp plan. I encourage all to do research and remember that land use is not within the purview of the school board, but we do want to talk about the impact on the schools. So I would check our social media for more details. Today, I'm wearing a green ribbon in support of Mitochondrial Disease Awareness Week, and for a child who is important to me. It is a global event that brings awareness to this long-term genetic disorder where mitochondria fails to produce enough energy for the body. Every 30 minutes, a child is born who would develop mitochondrial disease by the age of 10, and much like every, many other childhood diseases, like pediatric cancer, it is understudied and underfunded. I also enjoyed the Gainesville High School first varsity football game, and it was amazing school spirit, go Cardinals. I continue to appreciate the resolutions that are listed under the consent agenda, where we embrace all students, including their backgrounds, including this month, which is Hispanic Heritage Month. Yes, everybody, have a great evening, love and respect to all y'all, and have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Well, that nears the conclusion of our second meeting of the year, right? Second outstanding, all right. Thank you, Mr. Wilk, for the comments on the meeting. I will not assign you any homework this evening. We will, a couple of things, we have a college fair happening September 24th at Garfield High School. It's the Mid-Atlantic IB World Schools, but it's open to the public, and they got special topics on financial aid, scholarship search process, applying to schools outside the U.S., community college benefits and opportunities, HBCU experience and opportunities. So that is this Saturday, Garfield High School, 12:30 to 3:00, I think in their new gymnasium. So, please attend that, and to our seniors, make sure you're meeting with your counselors and families meeting with your counselors. Transcripts should be available to go out soon to your colleges. Apply early. Many universities have rolling admissions. That means your chances of getting in are better the sooner your application gets in. Many universities don't have them, but there are a few that do have them. And I think VCU is one of them, and we have maybe Mason here as well. Exciting beginning of the school year. I congratulate superintendent, all the staff. So far, it's been a terrific beginning of the school year. You know, students are excited to be back. We're back to the most normal we've been in many years. We got football games going on, homecomings are coming up this week, you know, make sure parents are going to back-to-school nights, please stay engaged. Remember the proverb I said earlier by the ancient Chinese proverb, it said, teachers open doors, and God knows, our teachers are opening doors every day all across this great school division. But it takes a student to walk through those doors, and everyone to help him walk through those doors, him or her. And it's really critical that we do everything we can every day to help those kids get through those doors. And so, engaging with your teacher, back-to-school nights, college fairs, you know, checking your emails, making sure we're, you know, we're trying to offer as much as we can here at the school division for parents to stay involved and be involved. It is absolutely critical, you know, studies continue to show, you know, parental involvement, you know, students who participate in extracurricular activities, all of these things increase student success. And if you're asking the most important question every day, and that's what really matters most, what really matters most is what we do for the children here in this school division. And that's the work that I really feel like we've done a good job on over the last couple of years, and I'm really committed to doing, our strategic plan is committed to doing that, Dr. McDade is committed to doing that, all the staff you have here in this building, all of our parents, we're really committed. So every day, you know, I wake up thinking about what really matters most, and it's the kids. It's the kids and their effort, we do what we can do for them to make them succeed and achieve all that they want to achieve. Thank you all, have a wonderful evening, and enjoy the rest of the week.